Is my on?
Yep.
Okay, welcome again. I seem to have a frog in my voice tonight, so I don't know whether I'm going to make it through this or not, but we welcome you here and we'll begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and invocation by Councilwoman Cheryl Stoker.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful that we can be here this night and discuss the business of our city and grateful for the residents who come and support us. We're also grateful for our city employees and our police officers and all the work that they do and the things that they provide and the safety for our city and our residents. We're grateful for the many things that thou dost bless us with and we ask that we will be able to discuss these things in a civil matter and that all will be well. Watch over us and say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to introduce our youth mayor this evening. Richie's sitting by my side and if I can't get through the agenda, he can. First item is our consent agenda discussion or action to consider August 21 city council meeting minutes.
Mayor had moved that we approved the consent agenda.
It's been moved that we approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm very pleased this evening to make an announcement. We have appointed a new police chief of North Ogden City, Lieutenant Dirk Quinney, and we're very happy that he has joined with us this evening along with members of his family, his good wife, and we'd like it this time to swear in the new chief of police. So if you come forward and spend love, our city recorder will provide that.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Utah.
And of the state of Utah.
And that I will discharge my duties.
And that I will discharge my duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. Can I have you sign right here? Sign there and I'll make you a copy between your box.
We certainly welcome our new chief. We're happy that he has accepted this position. He has several years of 23.
Twenty-three, yes.
With the North Ogden City Police Department. He has the backup of some wonderful officers and so we're happy to congratulate him this evening and pleased that he has accepted this appointment and if you'd like to make any comments, you're welcome to do so.
Just a few real quick. It's an honor, it's a privilege to work for you folks, but to work alongside these folks even more. I have two families, my wife, my daughter-in-law, and the rest that couldn't make it, and my second family who I think I see more than these guys in blue and the folks in the back, the ladies. And we're all committed to exactly what I've told you we're going to do and that's provide the city the best customer service that we can possibly do. So I'm excited to get going and we're going to hit the ground running. You're going to see some good things. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You're going to wear a tie every day now?
This is the only tie I own and you probably won't see it.
We'll take up a collection, okay? I got several at home.
You look good in tie, Dirk.
Well, this is a great event for our city, so we appreciate all of you officers who have joined with us this evening and participated in this event. We will now open the meeting for public comments.
My name is Julie Anderson, 940 East, 2600 North. I just want to address briefly the agenda item about the car wash at the entrance of North Ogden City. As I started looking through the information on prominence point, one of the things was it was supposed to be a welcoming environment for the city. When people came into our city, the first thing they saw was this beautiful building with nice storefronts. I saw the conceptual ideas in the report that was online today and I thought, you know what? That's nice. If we're going to do something like that. And then I see a car wash. It's like, seriously, the first thing that we're going to bring in, that people are going to see when they come into the city of North Ogden is a car wash. The thought went through my mind, and please excuse me, was, welcome to North Ogden. You'll have a clean car, but occasionally we poop on you. Sorry. That was just my feelings going through it. I'm not in any way, shape, or... But that's how I felt, is that we have this car wash that takes one-third of the frontage that is for business. That's a lot. And it kind of concerns me. And so then I got looking and noticed that it has to have a conditional use permit in order to be able to build this car wash. And so I started looking through the city code and looking and checking on some things. The property was zoned as an MPC zone. What I found very interesting in the report today was that it was created as an interim measure while the form-based code is being considered. Nowhere, anywhere could I find, when you guys approved the MPC zone, was there mentioned that this was a temporary zone. This was a zone that was made and created in order to create exactly what the city wanted. And then, as I got looking further into it, what I discovered was, is my big question to you guys is, is why is this being discussed by the city council and it has not gone before the planning commission yet? It would seem to me like, in order to get a conditional proof, a conditional use permit, it has to go through the planning commission. They have to look at it. They have to make sure that it's meeting the requirements that are required by the MPC zone, and that is not happening with this. I know tonight is only a discussion, I hope, but for me, I don't think this is the way we want to greet residents as they come into North Ogden City. I don't think it's appropriate for that area, especially if it has to have a conditional permit use. So I'm just sharing with you my feelings on that and I would hope that you guys would see that that is most probably not the most appropriate thing. One of the things that the residents said was, we don't want a convenience store on the corner of 1700, so you put it on the corner of 2550, which is right in the middle of town. And now we're looking at putting in a car wash. I don't see why a car wash is a much better thing on that particular area than a convenience store. And if we go into the form-based code, I don't think this applies to the form-based code. I've been doing a lot of research on the form-based code, yeah. My mind is swimming with everything that's going on it. But you know what? If you're going to go with form-based code, then you better start right now and making the right decisions so that as you continue to expand at least 1700 in prominence point, that that is one area that you can turn into a form-based code. If not, then follow the MPC zone and make sure that that is followed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Tiffany Turner, 2673 North, 950 East. I'm the North Ogden City Youth Council Advisor and we just want to thank all of you for letting us have a council, for supporting us and letting us be a part of everything that you do. We are going to be excused though now and go downstairs for our own council meeting. If you guys know of any fun activity-type service projects, I've been connecting with the Parks and Rec Department and they've given me some leads, but if you guys ever hear of something that comes up at this meeting upstairs, shoot us a text downstairs and let us know, okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Youth Council, for joining us this evening.
She married well.
As well as she could.
We did. Seeing no additional public comments, we'll move on with our agenda. Item four is discussion or action to consider an amendment to the Village at Prominence Point development agreement to allow a car wash. Presenter is Robert Scott, our Planning Director.
Mayor, council, and audience, this evening, as the mayor indicated, we'll be considering an amendment to the development agreement for the project Village at Prominence Point. In the staff report, I've given you some background information regarding the location. We're about 1871 Washington Boulevard. We're talking about a property that is around 47,000 square feet, so a little bit over an acre in size out of the total 18 acres of the project area. It's currently vacant. In terms of what type of decision this is, this is a legislative decision. And when you're considering a legislative matter, the city has a lot of discretion relative to the matter at hand. And in this case, because the MPC zone is structured the way that it is, there are certain requirements that are a part of that zone and as part of the development agreement that have put in place a review process. So there's two aspects of this review tonight. The first one is, should the development agreement be allowed, to be amended, to allow for automatic car washes as a use? If you determine that the answer is yes, then the second part of that is a site plan review. Now, as indicated previously, in the C2 zone, automatic car washes are a conditional use permit. However, because of the way that the development agreement is structured, you really are the approving authority for the site plan. So step one would be, do you want to allow the use? If you decide not to allow the use, then you don't need to worry about going through the site plan review process. But if you do approve the use, then we'll also be talking about the site plan as part of this discussion this evening. So by way of background, the development agreement establishes various standards as far as uses and design. And I've given you some references and given you attachments that relate to that. In the commercial area, the commercial section is Section 24, and it identifies the allowed uses. And those uses must be a permitted use in the C2 zone and not to be included in the prohibited list in subsection B. So automatic car washes are listed as a conditional use and therefore are not allowed unless the city council adds them to the list of allowed uses. Does that make sense? I want to make sure you all understand that's the basic premise of this whole thing.
Rob?
Yes, sir.
Over here.
Yes, sir.
So you're going to have to say that to me one more time again. So when I read the not permitted uses, it talks about drive-through business where drive-through lanes is located between the building and the public street. I guess that's, even though this is a drive-through car wash, correct? Is that part of the reason we'd have to change the zoning or is that...
It's the phrase that says that the use has to be listed as a permitted use in the C2 zone. So there's a list of allowed uses, a list of not allowed uses, and then there's an overall general statement that says if it's a permitted use in the C2 zone, then it's an allowed use. If it's not prohibited.
Okay.
So that's where we stand relative to that. If automatic car washes had been included as a permitted use in the C2 zone, then that discussion wouldn't be had this evening, but it is the situation that we're in.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions about the use aspect? Thanks, council. So by way of analysis, I've done a number of things to hopefully help you in your decision-making this evening. The recognition is that as part of the Village at Prominence Point, there are quite a number of documents that are attached to that, including an overall site plan, including various aspects of the design materials and so forth. So this was sent to us today. This is the latest rendering. It's... Is that the latest one? It is the latest one. And so it's not... There are a few changes from the site plan that's in the development agreement, and if the developer wants to incorporate some of those changes, they're going to have to come back in a separate action before you to approve a revised site plan. So let's go and talk a little bit more about some of the things that hopefully will help you in your decision this evening. So I've already identified the circumstances surrounding the development agreement. And under allowed use, there's a statement that talks about the envisioning of what you're anticipating for the commercial along Washington Boulevard. So I don't mean to bore you with a lot of details, but let me just focus on a couple of points here. The city envisions that, this is directly from the development agreement, the city envisions that the commercial development will be the southerly entrance to North Ogden with a prominent gateway building at the northeast corner of 1700 North and Washington Boulevard. Conceptual commercial building elevations are provided in Exhibit J, and those are as part of the attachment. Though the ultimate design will be determined by the developer at the time suitable tenants are located, the mayor shall determine if the proposed commercial elevations are significantly modified enough to require an amendment to this agreement. So that provision is really not before you, but the provision that is before you is that the city council should review the request to determine if the request is consistent with the above vision statement. So as far as helping you out relative to that. We also have an adopted general plan for this area. And that general plan map shows this property to be in the South Town area with two land use designations, mixed use and Main Street commercial. Mixed use, the description is, "development areas that combine residential, commercial, and/or office uses." And Main Street commercial, "commercial or mixed-use commercial uses with a direct orientation of the street and sidewalk. These uses shall have little or no setback from the public right-of-way." So that's the general statements regarding the types of uses that should be incorporated within the South Town area. In addition to that, the general plan has some goals and also strategies that relate to the properties that are within the South Town district, if you will. So I'm not going to read through each one of these, but I will just highlight a couple. The goals, "create design features that announce you've arrived into North Ogden." So there's definitely a correlation there with the idea of the statement building. Provide a support function to the downtown, so there's a recognition that we've got about a two-mile stretch along Washington Boulevard. And so the idea was that we'd have a downtown, but we'd also have a supporting district in the South Town area. In addition to that, it says, "revitalize North Ogden Plaza in the Kurtz area." Then in terms of goals, "create design features that announce you've arrived into North Ogden." There's a number of strategies that are identified underneath that goal. Goal number two, "provide a support function to the downtown." So that's sort of the reference that I've just shared with you. There's been some mention of the form-based code this evening. The current zoning of the property is the MPC zone. The zone was created as an interim measure while the form-based code is being considered. Some of the key elements of the form-based code include being pedestrian-friendly with a walkable environment. While the building is located near the property line, the purpose of these regulations is to allow a main entrance into a store, professional office, or other use by a pedestrian from Washington Boulevard and is to create a pedestrian-friendly environment where people would like to stop and stay a while. The car wash, despite the location of the building, staff does not believe that this meets the purpose. In addition to that, the automatic car wash has 310 feet of frontage on Washington Boulevard. This is approximately one-third of the frontage of 1,050 feet of the entire Village at Prominence Point project frontage onto Washington Boulevard. So those are the considerations that staff has identified relative to the use. I can go through the site plan review, or if you want to divide this up, discuss whether or not do you want to allow the use, and then I can come back up and deal with the site plan if you decide to approve that. So land use considerations, is allowing an automatic car wash consistent with the vision for the Village at Prominence Point project? By allowing one-third of the frontage of the Village at Prominence Point project for a strip commercial use, setting precedence for the frontage of the VPP project? Is the request consistent with the upcoming form-based code? Is the proposal consistent with the general plan? This is a policy decision, so the city council needs to determine whether approving to... Does the city council approve of allowing an automatic car wash as a use for the Village at Prominence Point project? So you want me to hold off until you have your deliberation on the use first? And then we can go through the site plan. If you decide to approve it, we can go through the site plan materials.
I think we ought to discuss the use first.
Okay.
So if you have questions for me relative to the use aspect of this, I'm here to help you through that. If not, the applicant's here and chat with them.
So show us on the plan, it says 1750.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, which one is it going?
Right about the middle, right?
It's actually on the north end.
So right next to Big O?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this would be Project.
Yeah, I didn't know which one of these it was going to be.
What's that?
I didn't know which one of these.
Oh, yeah.
I forget.
And so the frontage of Prominence Point is around 1,000 feet, you said, right?
Yeah, a little over 1,000.
But then you have the Big O that's from the street for the block. That block there is a little more than that, right?
Right. I don't know exactly what that is. I'm assuming it's 100 feet, something like that, maybe more than. Approximately.
And this building is about 300 feet long? Is that what you said?
The building itself.
Not the building, but the... Was the building that long?
No, the actual property is about 300-some feet long, yeah. 310.
Is the whole property, right?
The frontage. The frontage for this specific use is 310.
310.37 to be exact, right? I'm just curious how everybody else feels. Are we thinking about it?
So the applicant's here, and it'd probably be good to talk to the applicant before the council discusses.
Hello, my name is Jack Barrett, 34806 North 80th Way, Scottsdale, Arizona. Developer of Meritage Companies and Village at Prominence Point. Excuse me. What can I do? What can I answer for you folks?
How long is the building?
So the building itself is 160 feet long. So one of the things that you might want to consider here is, you know, this is a large project. It's been in the works for a long time. And when you look at the development agreement, you'll see it's a pretty intense, large document. We're talking CC and our state restrictions, we're talking site plans, we're talking the development agreement itself, and so there's a lot of work that went into that. So when we came to the council last year, I believe it was October 3 of 2017, I think if you look at the record, it showed that we were actually looking to have the fuel station, convenience store, if you will, added back on to the permitted use. And I remember it was kind of interesting because we've had this health, I call it healthy friction, but it's been a back and forth with the council and planning commission for some years now to create this project. And one of the thoughts was, back in 2015, 16, they said, hey, you know, we really don't want a fuel station. So of course, wouldn't you know, we start getting all kinds of activity from fuel stations that want to go on that corner after the council had said, we're not going to allow fuel stations. So I came back to you folks last year and said, hey, on top of this site plan review and, you know, the new layout, et cetera, hey, by the way, would you guys accept a fuel station as an accepted use? And came back and they approved it, said, yeah, we'll allow fuel station. What's interesting about this is if you look at the layout here, and I don't have my little laser jobby here, can I go up here and just point? Would that be acceptable to them?
You got a laser there?
You recognize I'm colored blind, so it's going to be terrible, but anyway. Let's see if this can be like... All right. And I apologize, where are we at here? There it is. Okay. Take a look at this little cylinder or little rectangular piece right there. The group that was interested in the corner was actually a convenience store that had the car wash attached to it. That's actually a car wash right there. And unfortunately, it never got reduced to riding. It was left as a conditional use application, but there's the drive-out right there. The vacuums are slated here, and I've got an actual original layout that I'd be happy to provide the council from the actual fuel station, convenience store operator. I guess the bottom line is, what we're really asking for tonight is, we're saying, hey, it didn't get documented because I understood, albeit later, that the car wash would be a conditional use. But at the same time, I'm sitting here saying, well, tonight, what we're really asking for is, even though it's not documented as a permitted use, it was a conditional use, what we're really saying is, what we want to do is, we want to tear off that use off that corner. You talk about, you know, a nice entrance. I totally agree with that. I mean, there's nobody that's spent, I'd say, more money in design in this community than me. Maybe the folks there that are shooting for that gondola, I don't know. They're probably spending some big bucks right now. But, you know, I got to be honest, I... But, you know, I gotta be honest, that was my first choice for the corner, the convenience store. But, I mean, they were pretty hot and heavy, and I thought, okay, well, you know, maybe we'll do that because it doesn't seem right. Because the new style of convenience store is actually pretty nice. They're doing some really nice thing with architectural. They're making more of like a, kind of almost a grocery feel. And there also, a lot of them have the car wash. But now, of course, now you're seeing a new trend where the cylinder, I call them cylinder washes, I don't know why, but tube washes, whatever you want to call it, they're breaking them apart again, and they've come up with some really sophisticated uses. The other thing is, if you look at where it's located there in the corner, we're really talking about pulling that use off. I heard a couple of comments. Somebody said to me, they said, yeah, but weren't you really talking about more like banks and maybe medical office up front, maybe some, you know, coffee shop, sub store, what have you on the front there for retail? Well, yeah, it's nice, but I gotta tell you, when we came up with this design, and of course, everybody knows what happened when Ms. Grace Hancock passed, well, you know, we had to start over, really. And we had to change the way we thought. The other thing is, we had to deal with, what are we going to put next to Big O's? I mean, I don't know if you guys ever stood outside that place, but man, oh, man, I mean, there's some noise there. You're not going to get a coffee shop there. You're not going to get probably, you know, a daycare or a hair salon. It's fairly loud, if that makes sense. And so you gotta find uses that are symbiotic, that make sense together. They gotta dovetail. And so when Jeff Shaw came to me with this concept, I mean, I'd actually forgot, I think John called, we sent him a note and said, hey, it's conditional use. I was like, okay. But he said, I would love to go next to Big O's. And coincidentally, he's talked with Big O's, or I believe Lori Lee, the broker, has, and he's excited about having the car wash. They're two uses that are symbiotic, they work together. And that's very important in this development. You look at how many residents we're going to have in here at 600-plus units, and there's going to be a number of cars. And, you know, this is going to allow to centralize the washing. I imagine it's going to serve this community very well, but the other thing is it uses less water. It's very, it's eco-friendly, if you will. I'm not going to go on a tangent, that's for Jeff to do. But, so the reality is, we were really perplexed with what are we going to do next to Big O's? And then Jeff just came. I wasn't marketing that site as a quote-unquote "car wash" site. He found us. But ultimately, we knew that when we sat, when we picked up this commercial ground, we were going to be looking at like a hardware store. We thought about South Fork, thought that might work nice. Certainly a missing link in the town until True Value, Ace, excuse me, came to town. We looked at auto parts, that can work. And the retail. And so, you know, part of the whole goal here with this community that we're building right now is to find those business owners, good operators with good businesses that make sense within the community, that are fit and sited properly on the development to where it makes the most sense. So if I can use my little... I'm going to quit using this. Excuse me, folks. I can just go up here real quick. So if you say to yourself, well, here's Big O's, and we say, well, you know, it's a little louder, and I'm not criticizing it, we all need tires. I mean, I'm... So we see this guy going here, and so then somebody would say, geez, you really, we want that retail feel, we want that retail front. Well, the other thing you gotta remember is that we are answering the market right now. I don't get to choose the businesses that have a whole lot better demographic research and study than our group does. They find us. And we talked about that a long time ago, back when this was supposed to be a retail commercial center. We said, we need to bring rooftops in, the retail, the service places, the service shops, et cetera. They will find us. We won't have to go looking for them. Boom, 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 look what we got here, we got a car wash. The next, the one that'll come next in here, next to a car wash, I can tell you, auto parts would be right up there. I can tell you maybe an oil service, you know, like a Midas, muffler, oil Jiffy Lube, et cetera. I think there's already... Anyway, we can see, so then as you migrate now further down south, what happens is you're going to see more of a creature comfort, most likely, especially as you get towards this corner. This corner lends itself to a serious retail play, credit union, it could be even a medical. But these are all uses that will fit well within this community, not only serve this community that we're building, but also serve the city of North Ogden. And so, you know, we come here tonight to say, really, you know, although it was not documented, this is the, not this particular site plan, but the old site plan you'll see in there, where this fuel station with the car wash was actually in there. The other thing you'll see in there, the reason I brought this, by the way, this is not a... One of the things I wanted to do with you folks tonight is update this, because there's a couple of other things that did occur within that site plan that's actually part of an exhibit in the development agreement. And that is, we noticed a couple of mistakes. There's, Rob can probably speak to this much better than I can, but the buildings are supposed to, we can't have the same type of building next to each other. Well, in the development agreement, our exhibit, unfortunately, we made a mistake. Actually, it's two A buildings right next to it. So we shuffled that around a little bit. And now this thing fits within the code. We've studied it, we researched it to make sure that there's not two of the same buildings across from each other, and that there's no two same buildings beside each other. The other thing you notice, if you take a look at this clubhouse, we moved it in, so now it's got a clear cut shot looking straight down the fairway there, if you will. The other thing is, we eliminated about 9,000 square feet of asphalt, replaced it with rainbow. So now when you look, and we've also moved this clubhouse, it was on the corner here, it's moved now to the center, where again, you get a clear shot at the fairway. The other thing we thought about, one of the things I was very nervous about, and I get worried about kids, small kids, as the mothers are shopping and fathers and families, you know, there's a prime opportunity here, sitting right here for kids to throw a football, frisbee, what have you. And this is a pass, that's a pass-through right there. And that just made me a little bit nervous. I said, well, what would it be if we could get rid of this pass-through right here and completely eliminate the risk of somebody throwing a football or what have you? Would traffic engineering approve that? And they did. The only issue we had is that we have to run the utility lines, which we passed on that one as well. We found out that in fact, they will allow Lauren, is he the new, I haven't met him yet, is he the new city engineer, is that right? Okay. He said, yes, you're fine there. We met, we checked with our traffic engineering folks, they've allowed that. And what you're also going to see here is in the lower corner here, we see this, it's the kids' play area. Why? Because you can see your kids, whether you're at this end or at that end, this is going to be the kids' area right here. So we put some time and thought and effort into doing this. We've invested a lot of money. It's not in our best interest to allow uses on here that simply don't make sense to the community, or our community. So we're asking that honestly, you just, you got, you know, I would call this an industrial retail use. We're saying this service provider right here is really kind of the same type of business, but it's another business, it's another tax revenue source for you folks. This fellow told me his budget, I believe, is about two and a half, three million bucks for your... That's not chump change. He's going to invest in your community. We're excited about that. We're excited to have it. Is there any questions I can answer for anybody?
I got a question. Could you, I mean, on the drawings, it shows the cars coming in from behind. Are you concerned about that and the access to it? They're not coming off of Washington, right?
Correct.
So kind of maybe show the route so we, everybody understands where the kind of the car's going to go?
Oh, sure.
Could you do that?
Yeah, so, well, so everybody realizes that we did not, first, I want to make sure we all understand this. We, as a developer, did not determine how many curb cuts we got on Washington Boulevard, excuse me. This was determined by you, Dot, interlocal agreement that was, John cleaned me up on this 10 years ago, like that?
About 20, maybe. It's been a while.
It's been a while. I've been on this project a while. So anyway, so this curb cut is right here. So part of the jigsaw puzzle is, what uses will go here with this type of access? He doesn't get a curb cut off Washington. All his clients need to come right in through here, up in, and his access point is right here. They come in here, they circle around, and their vacuums are right here, is that right? Okay. And again, the outdoor vacuums are sitting right next door to Big O's. And again, if people are concerned about noise, I mean, he's assured me that when you, with the new brick building, the new structures, is that right? You can't hardly hear them. And if, and take this right, but we're in the, we just got approved on our first phase of the multifamily, we're just waiting for the appraisal to come in. If anybody was concerned about the noise from this guy, it would be me, because we're going to own this. It would be Jeff Jackson of Visionary Homes. He's had no issue at all. So again, you know, he's got to come in right here, what we call, we call it the secondary access. But he's got to come in here, they've got to either funnel in this direction, come out here, and then go out to 1700 North. I guess technically they could go up and around. Any other questions on the site plan that I can answer?
So Rob, Mr. Scott? The landscape plan that shows the trees along Washington, is that the standard, those cherries? I think they're cherries. That's going to be the standard all along there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. I like the planting plan, that was a nice plan.
So when it talks about not allowed in commercial uses?
Yeah.
These are properties that are businesses not permitted.
Correct.
Right? So I don't see where a car wash would matter.
I think it would be, that's a question Rob would have to answer there.
Through the condition.
Conditional use. My problem is, I just don't want to see a present.
For a car wash, I mean, or something else?
What if you had something like this that came in and said?
We can say no? No? So Phil, you're being unusually quiet tonight.
I'm allowed.
I just know that you, I mean, you and Cheryl were, you know, meats, potatoes of this from the development a long time ago. I'm not necessarily opposed to...
Trying to pressure me into saying something?
No, I'm just, I'm not opposed to the car wash. I mean, I've looked at the drawings, and I see the frontage, and I, you know, it seems like it would be nice. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I just want to think about it a little bit, but I wanted to hear some other people's opinion.
Well, that's why I've been quiet, because I'm thinking.
It hurt?
It does. Terribly so. I won't do it for another month or so.
I was a little concerned, I thought initially, it was going to be on the corner of 1700 and Washington. Just out of curiosity, and I'm just kind of, I'm just kind of thinking as I go here, but we did have somebody here, what, about two or three months ago, who came in and wanted to change the, Phil, you may remember, wanted to change from, changed to the stucco?
Mm-hmm. That's this development.
Right. I really like, if we're going to grant this conditional use, I really like the look of this building. So I guess what I'm asking is, is if we go with a conditional use permit on this one, we're not going to have anybody pop in another month or so and say, well, you know what, it just was too expensive to put this kind of an appearance on it, so we've decided to do something different? Yeah, because I want to make sure that's really, really clear. I happen to be a big fan of the Form Based Code because I like things to have consistency. And so, Jack, I have to be honest with you. From my opinion, as a city council, I don't want to see somebody come popping in here a couple of months and say, you know, we just determined this would be too expensive, so we're wanting to know if we can go with a cheaper product.
Okay, so let me be really clear on this. So did you notice it wasn't me coming in asking for that?
Right.
Smart man.
But you're the one that said, that's kind of where the buck stops.
It is, and thank you for backing me up. I didn't know he came in to do that, just so you know. Because I told, I would have said, wrong answer. We've got the design, don't break it.
How many years did it take you to get that design?
That's why...
Exactly.
This gentleman came to me, what is the first thing, and I think, I told Jeff, I don't know you, and here's the deal. In fact, we just met with another couple of groups today, and one of them said, well, could we change this? I said, there are certain things that you can change, but I can tell you, this design, the exterior, the finish is not one of them.
I like, because I think it...
Because this is, this, I mean, when you look at this, right, this is a good design. This stands out to me. He did a nice job with this. He's not come to me and said, geez, Jack, if you'll get this changed, I'll buy this from you. We're not playing that. I can't do that. Visionary did not come to me, and it's on public record, and ask my permission on that, or I would have absolutely said, absolutely not. And it is what it is. I've worked too hard with you folks to all come to a consensus, to do things that make sense for the community. And really, think about this, it makes sense for our development. It's really simple. If I let one guy go off and on a tangent, do you know what that means? That means the next buyer is going to want the same exact courtesy. And now I've just created my own worst problem for myself. So that's why, I think the other thing you need to look at with Jeff, he's got a great design, he's got the start. While somebody might say, well, that's not quite the image we want to see when we're coming into the heart of North Ogden. Well, is Big O's? I like Big O's. I'm going to shop there. In fact, I don't know if I told you guys, but my wife and I are having a condo built for us, or a townhouse built there for us. So we're going to be residents here. So I'm going to use that, but you know what? They're not part of my development. It is not my area. I don't have jurisdiction over their design house that. But I do the moment people come up to our development. And that's why we set this design criteria, you will, I mean, if you look at the green space, I'm doing nothing else but to make the, if you see that, I didn't even point out the pickleball courts and the bocce courts. We're doing that to draw people into this place. Because if you can't draw them in, you never have a chance to keep them. And that's why the pedestrian is so important to me, because dead pedestrians don't make good renters. They don't pay mortgages, they don't shop. So I like this design personally. I think he can fit it right within, and I would not suggest that he try to do anything other than fit right within the code. And one of the first things that he was giving, Jeff, and I'm not picking you on at all here, but one of the first things we have to do is we have to give him a copy of the development agreement, it's part of our disclosures. Blake, you're familiar, I mean, you know that I have to give him the seller's clothes. So he gets 120-some odd page document, he'd say, okay, if you're interested after reading this, come talk to us. But otherwise, we're not going to go change it for a car wash, I'm not going to change it for a visionary. Does that make sense?
It does. And you did a great job. At first, I was a little bit hesitant, but it just, the car wash makes sense in that area.
You know, and I know we came to you last time for the convenience store. This is a better location. It just hands down. I would love to see either a medical, credit union, or something on the corner, and then let the fuel stations go somewhere else. But we had such a barrage, I don't know what happened, we just got barraged, and then all of a sudden, they went other places, which was fine, you know?
Jack, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Well, I'm ready to talk now.
Did I warm you up, Phil?
No, no. You hit on some of the questions that I had. One of the questions that I have along the lines with Blake, one, I do like the design, generally how it looks. It's not, you know, your typical tube-style car wash, which is nice. What I am curious about and concerned about, on the west, excuse me, the, on the west elevation, you've got a couple of small ephist bands, which is basically stucco, right? Some small bands on the east elevation, on the west elevation, um, excuse me, on the west elevation. On the east elevation, though, from the, you know, the midsection of the building all the way up to, you've got that single slanted, I'll just point here for everybody. You've got all of this marked as ephist, all of this on the east side facing Washington as stucco. I mean, it's not traditional stucco, but it's the ephist, but it's essentially what we told the other builder there that we weren't going to do, no stucco at all. I'd be more inclined if that were something other than the stucco, because we've said no stucco. That's in the development agreement, that's, the other builder came in and asked for that, and we said, no. In uncertain terms, that's Jack, how we feel about stucco. He can tell you. So that would be a concern that I have. I frankly, I like the bands, I like the west elevation design.
I like how that looks. It doesn't show up there quite as well as it does here on my iPad. I'm just concerned with, on the west elevation, on the, what would that be? The, see, if I'm looking west, that would be the north side, the exit. There's a pretty sizable section that would be ephist there, and then that whole east side.
And on the north elevation, the north side as well, there's a lot of that stucco-ish kind of stuff. Uh, Jeff, are you willing to bring this back with some different material there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm an exterior contractor, I'll put on whatever.
What's that? I'm sorry?
I'm an exterior contractor, I do, that's what I do for a living, is I install stucco rock and brick and siding.
Okay.
So, whenever you guys, you want siding, I'll give you siding. This stucco, I mean, we just went with the, uh, the look that is kinda current.
Right.
And this commercial look, it's not like a regular stucco that we install on the right side.
Right.
Commercial brand, but at the end of the day, it is stucco, so if it's something that you want me to change, it's not gonna be an issue.
Yeah, we've made it pretty clear, we don't want stucco down there.
So, the other options you have are, um, similar, what you see as the brown on that plan.
The hardy board.
Hardy board?
Yeah.
Just different colors of hardy board.
That would be awesome.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm with Blake, I, I like the design, I think the location is okay. Um, I wouldn't want it on the, right on that, that main corner there, the, the northeast corner.
Thoughts I had, initially, I may have been opposed to it, but seeing that it's right next to Big O, I actually...